Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Move on to the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes, Dr. Parker?
Just a couple. Since you saw it last, we have updated our personnel report, which is typical, especially this time of year. And the credit card claims was updated just this morning, so you guys should know that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion by Kelly. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Second by Stacy. Any questions? All those in favor signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Dr. Parker, do we have any public comments this evening?
No one signed up for public comment.
All right. We'll move on to our reports. Dr. Parker?
Thank you much. We'll start off with a good news report this evening, and I'd like to invite our Director of Community Relations, Maria Bond, to share.
Okay. It's early in the school years, we all know, but we still have plenty of good news to share. So Mount Vernon proudly recommended, uh, recommended, excuse me, welcomed thirty-four outstanding new teachers this year. So to help them thrive in their new roles, they will participate in our new teacher academy, which is designed to provide ongoing support through their journey here at Mount Vernon the first school year. On the first day of school, Dr. Parker joined the Fortville Elementary School bus route to personally greet students and some parents as well. At each school, the morning was filled with high fives, smiles, hugs, and some incredibly contagious energy. The joy, pride, and sense of community that make Mount Vernon so special were on full display first day of school. And Community Connections, the Marauders Athletic Club hosted the annual Booster Blast at Mount Vernon High School last Saturday, bringing together athletes, families, and supporters for a spirited community event. The event's silent auction, dunk tank, inflatables, games, and other activities generated several thousand dollars. I don't have the amount yet, but all while providing plenty of fun for our community. Special thanks to the support of the Mount Vernon Education Foundation, as well as sponsors and donors in the Mount Vernon community. The Mount Vernon Intermediate School Staff Lounge has been refreshed to provide a relaxing and beautiful space for staff members. And if you haven't seen it, I highly recommend you go over there. It's not completely finished, but they've also got a relaxation room that they're also working on as well. It's quite special. Mount Vernon High School Athletics launched their new and improved website. It's the same URL as before, as well as a new app. So this offers an updated and user-friendly experience for fans and families. Our back-to-school nights drew packed crowds in many schools, fostering numerous positive connections among staff, students, and parents. And last but not least, under noteworthy media, just days before the school year began, Dr. Parker joined Wish TV Morning News for a special back-to-school feature. I think it was about four minutes long or so. It was a nice segment. He highlighted the district's growth and the spirit of community collaboration surrounding the opening of the new elementary school and reopening of Mount Vernon Intermediate School. He also shared a few of our exciting hands-on learning initiatives and project-based opportunities that Mount Vernon students are able to participate in throughout their career here at Mount Vernon. There's additional press coverage in your board packet.
Thanks much, Maria. Next, I would like to invite to the microphone Mr. Stan Wilkerson. He's going to provide an update on our Hancock County Career Center. As you know, Mr. Wilkerson is in his first full year as the county cooperative director. While we still call him ours, he's really, now we have to equally share him with all the other schools. And I'm very excited about this work and the work that Stan is doing, and I think you will appreciate the update that he's about to provide. Mr. Wilkerson?
Well, there's been a few changes since we've last spoke, last board meeting at the beginning of twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I don't know if you guys have driven two hundred west and three hundred north. The building has come along, and obviously you guys have seen the rendering. So a couple celebrations. One is the construction from November fifteenth. We had the groundbreaking ceremony, I think July sixteenth this summer. We had a beam signing. So I tried to put, you've seen the floor plan. The floor plan has not changed, but I tried to kind of put a timeline, as you can, up and down a little bit, of when it first started to, it was probably a couple of weeks ago. I was actually on the site today, and it's, you're really starting to see it come to fruition in terms of putting the brick on and the concrete on the outside, the decor on the outside. And as you can see, it continues to grow. Over a hundred thousand square feet, thirty thousand square feet is the Career Center, where the programs will be hosted. So I don't know if you, do you guys get these slides? Okay, all right. So you've had a chance to look at them. Good. So, and then the final picture I have was the beam signing, which I, again, think was July sixteen. So that's the latest photo, and there's been several updates since then. Supposed to be in closed end of September, is what I've been told. Supposed to have access June twentieth. So if you guys aren't busy like June twentieth and want to help move equipment, textbooks, what have you, I'll send you an invite. Other celebration is enrollment. So if we go back to twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had a hundred and sixty-four students participate in HC3 programs among the four districts. Last year, we had two hundred and twenty. This year, we're at two ninety-five, three, four. We're still doing some schedule changing here at Mount Vernon. So the trend is up. Overall, average increase, I think, is forty-four percent from last year just to this year, if I did my math correctly. We still have aviation program. Everything's a full day. Aviation program is still a half day. The programs at Eastern Hancock are a half day, and then the carpentry and HVAC are half day. So the goal for us next school year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, when we open, is to be four hundred-plus students. Capacity is five hundred and sixty-five. We're adding four additional programs. Hopefully you know. In transportation logistics, we have eight, or not aviation, auto service, auto collision. In construction, we're adding an electrical program, and then in the health sciences, we're adding dental. So again, two ninety now, two ninety-five, whatever, somewhere in there. And adding four additional programs and moving two programs, the HVAC and the carpentry, to full day. So that's why Dr. Parker alluded to. I'm in the other schools, making connections, and we'll be meeting with students. We're getting ready to do a Hancock County initiative, which is conducting a career survey by the end of September, and then I'll be pulling students in my offices, closets, at the other schools, if any of their interests align with any of the twelve programs that we'll be offering. So things, goals, initiatives that we're all working on, I've had great support, not only here, but with the other schools, superintendents. So we're working on a CLNA. That stands for Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, and that has to be done with the state. We almost had that finished, but then the state revamped it. So now we're adjusting that and actually have a stakeholder meeting August twenty-third, I believe. Basically, that's an assessment of all the programs, twenty-six-page assessment of every program, that you have to show evidence and supportive evidence for that. Again, enrollment's increasing. My goal is to meet with all of those students to get that four hundred-plus. I'm very confident that that's going to happen. Also, during this time, we're updating promotional tools, because we're not only adding those programs, we're improving or enhancing our existing programs. And that's, that bullet's on there. And then the comprehensive campaign, we could use a slight loan for one point five million. So if you guys win the lottery. So we're also working on ordering and purchasing equipment, because with the new facility, state-owned facility, we want state-of-the-art equipment. So we're working on that and backwards planning on when we can deliver, and some of it needs to be installed, or some we can just roll in on that June twentieth date that you're going to help out on. That is my HC3 update. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson.
Yep, it is. It is. I'd like to take you guys on a tour once we get that green light, if you'd be interested in that. So, all right. Don't shut it. All right. Thank you.
So next up, I'm going to ask our Director of Curriculum, Dr. Scott Shipley, to introduce the next report. Dr. Shipley?
Yes, we have Troy Guthrie from Mount Vernon High School, social studies teacher, to talk about a trip that he would like to take overseas in the summer of twenty-two, twenty-seven. Okay.
I'd say two years ago, I came in front of the board to take a trip. This is my, this will be my third, fourth trip taking students. In this last summer, we went to five countries in twelve days and took twenty-one students throughout Europe. This, in twenty-twenty-seven, we would like to roll out and have, we're going to concentrate on going to the UK. Two days, if you can see in there, you can see the, two days in Dublin, two days in Belfast, two days in Edinburgh, and then three days in London. I, we try and get the most bang for the buck for students, so that they can go to as many places as they possibly can. We went all throughout Europe this summer. Students get a chance to see the world, and they get a chance to be immersed in the culture in that time. Being a world history teacher to freshmen, it's really cool to see, like, for instance, myself, as a world history teacher, Ms. Barker, who teaches AP World and does an unbelievable job to sophomores, taking students and them seeing up close things that you have discussed in class and experienced. We try and keep it below five thousand dollars, so that it's affordable over two years. Depends on how many, just like when Shannon Schiller comes in front of the board, it depends on how many students we get, how many chaperones we'll have, all of that stuff. Questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Craftery and Mrs. Tharp, actually, I really appreciate such early, advanced notice of what you're wanting to do, because not only does that allow the board time to approve things, but it gives you plenty of time to communicate with families, and I just want you to know, we really appreciate it. Okay, I believe Mr. Elkins is up. He's going to provide a budget preview, and looks like he's plugging in, so he'll get going in just a moment.
Yeah. No, I've never seen, there we go. I had never seen it flash before, but we're good. All right. So the highlight, obviously, of the evening and of the year is our annual budget preview. Let me set the stage just a little bit here before we dig in. So the budget season for us is late summer, early fall. So at the September board meeting, and we'll post this on the public website that where we're required to, a notice of the hearing. And as you know, I don't plan to do really much of a report that night, because we've previewed it, we're previewing it tonight, plus we had the added bonus of Mr. Gardner joining us a month ago. I don't know what I'm, will possibly be able to say next month that I'm not going to say tonight, or that wasn't said last month. So if anyone wants to come and speak to it, that's fine. That's what's a hearing. But that'll be pretty short and to the point. And then in October, the actual budget submission will be in the form of a resolution that the board can take up for consideration and approval. And again, I don't really plan to say a whole lot, because it's just going to be the fall, it'll just be the next piece that falls in line from what we present next month. So I wanted to make sure that we kind of understood the timeline. Now, let's go ahead and dig in. So I always start by showing you where we're at this year. These are our current budget appropriations, and appropriation means permission to spend based on your revenue and any cash reserves you have at the start of the year. And I'll, so the education fund is, is supported through the state. This is always the time of year that I remind folks, that fund is supported by income tax, sales tax, excise tax. Your Fortville-McCordville dollar is just as likely to end up in the Evansville-Vanderburg schools as it is the Mount Vernon schools, right? Because that's, it's redistributed through the state. Debt service is kind of like our mortgage fund. That's supported by local property taxes. Pension fund's always confusing, and next year will be the last year for it, so let's just say it was used many years ago to generate some money to help some folks retire early. Operations is kind of the stuff, right? Utilities and buses and all that fun, those fun things. Again, supported by local property taxes. Rainy Day is our piggy bank that we use for special projects and one-time purchases. And then, of course, the referendum fund, which was approved in May of twenty-two. And so, let's see, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. So twenty-six will be the fourth year that we've collected revenues off of And then do a little quick historical comparison, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then where I think the rates will be for twenty-six. On the budget hearing and budget resolution documents, again, I'm repeating myself from, as, year from years past, we always advertise high. So what that means is, when I'm sitting working the budget, I always manipulate the numbers, so that the rate's going to be higher than what it actually is, so that the property values are going to be lower than what they actually are, so that the money I request is going to be higher than what we actually get. Because DLGF, it's their job to take all that and apply the rules and the state laws, and make sure we get what we're due, and no more, no less. So that's kind of the checks and balances, give and take. We maximize our request, and then they apply the rules and laws to it to make sure it's what we're entitled to. So this is more closely aligned to where I think the budget will actually be, not what you'll see on the hearing documents. And so the capped rate, which is line one, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth line down, for twenty-twenty-six, I'm estimating a dollar nineteen sixty-nine. That's actually about a penny and a half lower than this year's rate, which is kind of a little bit shocking when you think about the caps that Mr. Gardner shared last month. I think that could be maybe one of, you know, next year, maybe the year after that, depending on what kind of actual growth, true growth, we have. We'll probably see the rates tick up at some point, because, as he explained, it's a math problem, right? Even if we don't get any more revenue, if the property values have all these caps and new deductions applied, the amount you're taxing is going to decrease, therefore, the rate has to go up to collect the same amount of dollars. So we will see where that capped tax rate plays out over the next two or three years, but I do think we could see another penny or two drop, especially if we're growing the way I think our property values are going to come out, and I've shared a little bit of that with you in some communications. I will be working the budget. I will be presenting the budget to you with the referendum at the voter-approved rate of seventeen cents. So I've included that rate in tonight's presentation, so all totaled, because that is higher than the thirteen cents, the fourteen cents that we have this year. And remember, the last two years, those rates were set because of the levy or the revenue caps that the state put in place over those two years. Again, it's a math problem, right? You can only get so many dollars, and so based on your property value, here's the rate it takes to get that predetermined amount. We're out, we're not playing by that rule anymore. And so with the voter-approved seventeen cents, the overall rate will tick up a little bit, about a penny, penny and a half. But that's why. It's because of getting out from under those revenue caps from the last two years on the referendum. And the property value, which is the bottom right, in this model, I'm assuming a pretty conservative growth of two, over two percent. I think we're going to blow well past that, especially if you look at some of the property value growth. And again, that has caps and deductions applied to it, so it's more of a reflection of true growth, not reassessment. But if you look to our neighbors to the north, I've shared with you some of the Hamilton County numbers that are coming in. I think we're going to be much more in line and well above two percent, which will help drive the rate down. And then I keep a running tally of twenty-twelve, when the debt restructuring and the DOAB and all of that old story, and I'm not going to rehash it, but that was kind of the high point of our tax rate. And then, as you see what's happened in recent years, even with the referendum, we continue to drop our tax rate. All right? So even tacking the brown on top, we're lower than we were in the years prior. So if we were able to just capture that true growth that was taking without these restrictions, we would continue to drive that rate down even more, I think. For the referendum, I'm anticipating about five point two, five point three million dollars of revenue at that seventeen cent rate. Now, the AV, the property values for the referendum are always going to be a little bit higher in our district than the property values used for the other part of the budget, debt service and operations, because the property values within the TIF districts, and not just the county TIF, but even the towns that have some small TIF, that's included in the AV amount that is, that the, excuse me, that the referendum levy is applied to. And that difference between the capped AV and the, and the TIF AV being out, it's approaching about a billion dollars difference now in our district. It's a pretty substantial amount. When we started the referendum, it was about three, three hundred million or four hundred million difference. So it's, it's, even with these new restrictions, that gap is continuing to increase. I always like to do a little bit of a breakdown on our operations fund, because really, when you cut through all of it, besides paying our obligations, kind of our mortgage, our big capital project payments back, eighty percent of what we do in, as far as our budget, is to keep our operations fund afloat, because it has so many things that, where it takes a hit from, that a lot of other districts don't have to deal with. So just some numbers, going to ask for fifteen million dollar appropriation. We won't get that, and we don't need that, but I'll ask high. The max levy is seven point one, but of course, we don't collect that. We have about three million that we lose to circuit breaker impact. And if you want to hear that explanation, just put your hand up. I'd be happy to tell the story again, if you would like to. Pension debt levy, I told you, that fund, that fund is about two hundred and thirty thousand, and we don't need to levy or tax for the full amount, because we have some cash to help pay it off. So about a hundred thousand dollar deduction. We'll bring in about three point three from the Ed Fund, and that is all kind of structurally set up from the twenty-nineteen funding reorganization. So that's an expected amount. Little bit of dollars, still related, all that debt restructuring from twenty-twelve that we can move into the Ops Fund. Of course, we get some revenue from the referendum that we move into operations. Our local miscellaneous taxes, right now, that includes not only vehicle excise tax, vehicle licensing, it also includes the local income tax distribution, which is now legally scheduled to expire in twenty-twenty-eight, which is about a million dollars loss of revenue as of today. There's some other things going on that Barry spoke to last month, that could be up to another six hundred thousand dollar negative impact to the Ops Fund. Might be a little less, could be a little bit more. We'll see where it all shakes out. And then, depending on maybe what we do with our debt fund, I won't get into all the nitty-gritty, but we might still be able, hopefully, we'll still be able, to move some debt dollars over to the Ops Fund, to the tune of about a million dollars to help with that two point nine or three million dollar circuit breaker impact. And that's all allowed by law. So tonight, we're kind of doing the hearing as our first step to advertise the budget. By ten days, I have to have everything submitted to DLGF and the notice of the hearing published online. Next meeting, we'll present the document that is part of that public hearing, and then we'll approve the budget on October sixth. So that's our timeline. And I just thought it was worth sharing again, as I talked about, the rate may be going up or not decreasing as fast as we, as we would have been. Just pulled a couple slides from last month's presentation. The green line is gross property values, like the actual value that the assessor assesses your property at. It's what it's worth. And that's, that has a whole bunch of market data plugged into the formula. It's not an opinion. It looks at what did homes or other properties sell for in the, in the neighborhood. And so that market value is applied, and you can see that the rate that it's growing, pre-substantially. And there's, there's a wide gap there between that and the blue, which was the net AV, the property values that we were applying our tax rate to, except now, we have this new orange line with all the new Senate Enrolled Act I caps and credits and deductions being applied. So the property value goes down, and then it starts to peak back up over time. And again, Barry did a great job explaining that, but it does, it, again, to go back to, it's, it's a math problem, right? And so as you pull one lever, other things adjust. I also thought this was interesting, when you look at a couple samples from our, kind of our geographic areas. This is from Buck Creek Township, kind of a typical homeowner. By the way, this, the median AV, gross AV in our district right now for a resident is three hundred three thousand, five hundred dollars. So that's kind of right in the middle of all the, all the home values. But you can see what the typical homeowner in Buck Creek Township, what they would have been paying into the overall, not just the school, this is their entire tax liability. But you can see what they would have been applying or paying in blue. I'm trying not to make it too confusing, but he, remember, he presented a couple options, if you ask for the same amount of dollars every year, or if you tax at the same rate every year. So again, trying to keep it simple. But you can see that the trend there is, there's, there's a dip down in general before it goes back up over time. So trying to keep it as simple as possible. And then in McCordville, the lines are pretty much the same. If this were class, I'd give you an opportunity for extra credit answer to my question, why is that? But the easy answer is, it's because almost everyone in McCordville is at their one percent cap. So in private fact, in fact, probably well over it, to be honest. So there's not going to be much difference between what they, what they would pay in either scenario, and the old law or the new law or whatever. They're at their cap, right? So that's why that line looks the way it does. Okay, last slide for the night. I thought this was worth sharing. A lot of lines here. I put it on a black background to see the colors a little, little better. This is our referendum revenue. And so for the first couple of years here, this part of the graph, no matter which one you're looking at, up here, is all historical. We, I took data points from the first year, and then the second year, and the third year. And then from that point, we have the, all these scenarios. Now, let me back up. This light blue line was the revenue that we projected way back in October of twenty-twenty-one, when we were trying to figure out what rate should we ask for, and what do we think, based on the property values at the time, that will generate. And so that was the line. And remember, our seventeen cents is a relatively low rate, because we knew we were going to grow, and we wanted to take advantage of that growth over time to generate more revenue at a moderate, at a moderate or modest rate. So then in twenty-twenty-three, we had this legislation come in that said, well, you can only increase your revenues by a certain amount. And in twenty-four, there was another restriction. And now in twenty-five, it's back to kind of apply what, you know, apply your rate, except that the property values are going to be decreased, and so it's having a similar effect. The key takeaway here is this. We can look at what if we, what if the rate was still fourteen cents? What if twenty-twenty-three legislation never happened? The bottom line is this. At this point right here, the last year of our very first projection in October of twenty-twenty-one, and now this darker blue line, which this is all historical, and then twenty-twenty-five legislation hits, and we apply the seventeen cent voter-approved rate, and the AVs go down, right, because of all the caps and deductions, we end up at pretty much the same place. I think that's very interesting, to say the least. So even, so although there is a bulge there, there's a gap over time, when it ends up, where it ends up, is the same place that we predicted. is the same place that we predicted now almost four years ago. So with that, I will take any questions or comments that the board has.
All right, then, thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you, Greg. This time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have our regular session minutes from July 14th and our work session minutes, our personnel report claims, construction claims, several construction change orders, and monthly fund transfers. We have three overnight field trip requests, three generous donations to approve. This time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Megan, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, second by Kelly. Any questions regarding the agenda? All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries 5-0. Then I believe we have Dr. Shipley up on Human Growth and Development program.
Yes, thank you. This is not new for us, but Human Growth and Development, we have been working with HealthEd Pros as a partner in providing human growth and development lessons in our elementary and middle school age students and the I Decide For Me program at Mount Vernon High School. We've been doing that, so this is not new. However, there were some changes with Indiana code starting July 1st, and that's one reason why we're bringing it to you. And I'm not getting the dongle to work. It's flashing red.
Mine flashed green for a while, and then it finally...
Yeah, greens. Restart?
Universal reset?
Now it's going to work. So as I said, this is not new. However, there was some changes to Indiana code, and now maybe it's going to work.
We're working that little dongle out tonight.
There we go. So there were some changes to Indiana code. And the biggest change is having the resources available at all times on our website. That is the biggest change. There are some minor changes within the parent permission slip form, some minor changes that will be really easy for us to incorporate, like minor change, we have to indicate if it's going to be a male instructor or a female instructor. We have to indicate if the boys and girls are going to be in coed or separated, which we already did that, but those are a couple of new language pieces in the law. The biggest one is providing the resources on our website. So we put together this one document with the resources that describe the programming. This top paragraph just introduces our partnership with HealthEd Pros and I Decide For Me. And then you can see fourth grade. There's a course description link there. There's a sample parent information letter that will be sent out via ParentSquare. And our parent information requirements and letter notifications have stayed the same. We still send the first notification 31 days out, and then 10 days later. And so we have the same system as far as notifying parents. They get multiple notifications. And if they don't respond, it's considered implied consent from Indiana code. So if a parent doesn't respond, then the child will participate. But there's a sample parent letter that has an overview of the programming. And then for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, here's a live parent overview of content. This is the link of the 2025 sample. We had over 100 parents either in person or watched the video of the parent overview, where Diana, our representative from HealthEd Pros, goes over the entire program, all of the content in the live one-hour Zoom recording. And again, the same thing for fifth grade and sixth grade. Those resources are there, a sample, all those things. And then, of course, the I Decide For Me program for the high school course. There's a link to the I Decide For Me website. And on their website, it includes links for their daily lesson plans or syllabus, the booklet the students get, homework assignments. There's a video on the stages of fertilization and surveys, entry surveys and exit surveys, those samples. All the questions are there on that website. And student and family resources are there as well. There's a sample letter that would be sent to our Mount Vernon High Schools and the health courses sent through ParentSquare. So if you approve this action item tonight, this is a document that would suffice the new Indiana code by adding it to our website. Our intention is, on the Mount Vernon website, when you go to it, you go to Academic Excellence Curriculum Grading. When we go to it, we have instructional resources, adopted instructional resources. If you approve this tonight, these will be our adopted Human Growth and Development, and we would add in here Human Growth and Development and link this document so people have access to all the resources. It will say Human Growth and Development for fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and high school health. It'll be right there on the website to meet the new requirements. Any questions?
I like that it'll be available to parents to resource at any time.
At any time.
Yeah.
When parents...
Sorry.
That's okay. When parents are notified, is there information in that notification that says they can go to the website and find the whole curriculum?
It's not in the current samples you saw there, because we didn't have that last year. Next year, we'll send those out. It will include the links to our website and say it's all there, but we'll also spell it out in the permission slip.
I don't have the link, so they can just click that link. And you're right, that's perfect, yeah.
Correct.
I like that. Very good. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Human Growth and Development curriculum.
I move that we accept the Human Growth Development curriculum as presented.
Okay, motion by Kelly, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Any more questions? All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shipley. Mr. Elkins?
Well, if you talked me into it, I suppose we could read off all of these individually. But since they're the same ones we do every year, I'm going to ask the board to consider all of these annual budget resolutions as one item, and I would appreciate if the board would approve them so I can submit them to DLGF along with my budget order for 2026.
I think we welcome that. I did approve them all at once. Do I have a motion to accept the annual budget resolutions for '26?
I move that we accept the annual budget resolutions for 2026 as listed in our agenda.
Okay, motion by Chad, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Megan. Any further questions from Greg? All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries 5-0. This time, Dr. Parker, we have our second reading of policies.
Thank you very much. As you can see, we have several policies queued up for approval as a second reading. I gave you these policies with some others that were waiting until September, because I didn't want to give you too many at one time. I do appreciate your support and reading through these. And again, I present these policies for your approval tonight.
Okay. This time, we have eight policies to approve a second reading of. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion that we accept the policies as presented.
Okay, motion by Stacy, do I have a second?
I will second.
Second by Chad. Any questions regarding the policies?
No, but I appreciate everyone's answering my tedious questions on all the documents.
Good questions.
Those are good questions. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, and then, Dr. Parker, we have an action item for some elementary enrollment changes.
Yep, thank you very much. Oh, I left it plugged in too long, and now it's flashing red, but it was fine a minute ago. It's actually a Ben Q, is that how you pronounce it? So we're just going to, Kelly, what's the name? I mean, we're calling Ben.
It needs to be Ben.
Ben. Ben Q. So I want to share with you some things that are going on. Come on, you can do it, Ben. It's flashing green. I'm going to push it again.
Come on, one more thing.
I'm going to plug it again. To make a long story short, and I'll show you the images in a moment, our school district is growing quite well. However, Fortville Elementary, when comparing the other two schools... When comparing the other two schools, is growing just a little bit faster. And we're getting Ben's... Oh!
Oh, he's coming.
That's not me. Ta-da!
Good job.
He just had to be threatened.
Okay, yeah. So as you can see in this little table, our current capacity at each of our elementaries is 800, 750, and 750 students. Of course, you chose to build Fortville Elementary a little larger, which is pretty smart. That gives us a capacity of 2,300 students. So if the buildings were all filled up, that would mean Fortville Elementary School would have a little over, well, well over 34% of the capacity in their building. The other two schools, about 32.5% capacity. So if you look over here, this is our current enrollment. Right now, we have 1,897 students in grades K through 4 in our three elementary schools. Obviously, that's about 400 fewer than our capacity in those three schools. And that's wonderful. But as you can see, how the schools have grown, when they were K-5 schools, Fortville is growing faster. And Mount Comfort was actually a little bit bigger than McCordville last year. Ideally, what we would love to see is for that when all of our schools, when we get 2,300 K through 4 students, that they're equally distributed in all of our schools, and we've maxed out the available space in the most efficient way possible. So in order to do that, I want to request consideration for a change. This map demonstrates both our current developments and existing housing. So all of the green, excuse me, all of the darker green are current housing additions, or you call them subdivisions at times, that are filled out. They have homes in them, we have kids coming from them. What is on the lighter green, and this is much better than downstairs, of course, the lighter green is the developments that we're getting ready to see and we're starting to see already. This represents about 3,800 students altogether coming to us at one point or another. So what I am going to ask, and we've studied this left and right, up and down, beat it up, there are two housing additions, Vittner's Park and... Oh, it fell out of my brain. Rockport, yeah, Tatum Rockport, thank you. These two housing divisions are relatively new. Tatum Rockport is very new. I think it has one house in it. Vittner's Park has several houses in it. But right now, both of these housing additions have seven students attend our schools. Not one of them are an elementary student. They're all secondary students, and only five of those seven ride a bus. This is the property on that Daniel's Vineyard sits on. So what I'm going to ask is, in order to mitigate the imbalance we're starting to see more of, and we think it's going to be more, we feel like our schools will fill up slightly better. This will be just a little bit better by transitioning these three areas to McCordville and not Fortville Elementary School. And we believe that will help us to balance things better in the future as we fill up. We are looking at another 250 students in our district this year. My guess is it's going to be a bit north of that, maybe closer to 275. And we popped a year earlier than we were expecting, and we just want to be able to do the least amount of redistricting as possible. We haven't redistricted since probably eight, nine years ago, something like that. And we've been doing really well, because we know how stressful it can be. My dream would be that the next time we redistrict is when we add our fourth elementary school. That's a dream, I hope it works out, but this could help us for that. So I'm asking the board's consideration to transition these two residential developments with zero elementary students in it to McCordville Elementary School.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the recommendation to reassign Vittner's Park and Tatum Rockport to McCordville from Fortville.
Thank you, Kelly. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Second by Chad. Any further discussion or questions?
I appreciate that we're doing it now, and it's not going to really affect a lot of elementary families. It's hard when your kid starts and then you change. So I appreciate that this came to us at a time that we can get ahead of it and not have anybody too upset with us.
Absolutely. All right. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Move on to our board member reports. Stacy Nelson with Fortville RDC.
The Fortville RDC did meet in, gosh, it would have been July. Yes, since our last meeting, there was no items that were really relevant to report to the school board.
Okay, very good. Kelly Freeman with Cumberland.
We did meet, I did attend. We didn't have any new business. It was a training on TIFs and how all that works, and so there was no new business.
Oh, that's always good. I like when McCordville does that. It's a good refresher every time.
Yeah, it's a good refresher, and I always think I'm going to know it back and forth, and I still don't. So I try, I'm better than I used to be.
It's challenging. Mr. Gray with the Hancock County RDC.
I have nothing new to report from them.
Okay. I did attend McCordville's RDC last week. It was all about a new stoplight that's going in at Brookside. So I never knew stoplights were so expensive.
It's like buses, no one knows how expensive buses are.
I know, I know. And then the Education Foundation, Megan.
Yes, I did attend last month. They were very busy planning the upcoming SOAR event, which I believe is on the 20th over at the airport. So they've been working hard on that. And then also, working on the intermediate school lounge for the staff. And they got a few other things up their sleeve that they're trying to get going for the school year for staff. So very exciting stuff.
That's awesome. They do great work. Dr. Parker, do you have any further announcements?
Yep, just a couple. Really excited about our fourth annual SOAR event at the, we call it about Comfort Airport, but it's Indianapolis Regional Airport, the Jet Access Hangar. Once again, they are donating their space for a huge staff celebration, and we partner with the Mount Vernon Education Foundation. This year, there's going to be a few more games, tons of great food, amazing prizes. And we're really looking forward to seeing all of our staff there to celebrate. It begins at...
4:00, 4:30?
4:00. It begins at 4:00, thank you. 4:00 and ends by 7:00, usually by about 6:30. Thanks, Maria. There is the request to register for that. It's free to register, they're just wanting the numbers. Board, if you would like to just let me know, I'd be happy to register you. I know everybody would love to see you, even if you can just come for the first hour or so. They would really appreciate being able to see the board member there. And then, the annual alumni reunion is set for September 6th in this room. And maybe with a little luck, we won't see black plastic by then, but you never know. If not, we'll make it the best we can. And those are my announcements for the evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Parker. I would just like to add, before we adjourn this evening, just a round of applause and thanks for everything that everyone's done over the summer to get us ready for back-to-school season. I think that our campuses look amazing, our buildings look amazing. We should be very proud of all the work that you do. So when the kids leave, it's when you guys really kick it in high gear and work really hard over the summer to be ready for our families. So thank you, guys, for all your hard work over the summer to be ready for our kiddos. So our operations team, everybody's just amazing. It always just kind of blows my mind how it all comes together last minute, and you make it look easy, even though I know it's not. So, thank you. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, motion by Kelly, do I have a second?
I will second.
Second by Megan. All in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries, meeting adjourned at 7:50. Motion carries, meeting adjourned at 7:50. Thank you.
Thanks, all.